Okay, so Limburg Schools Board of Education Workshop Meeting is called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do not.
All right, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Very good, since we are meeting electronically today, we'll call our votes by roll call. So Karen Schuster, yes. Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Kristy Watts?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Dr. Kathy Karlock-Lorain?
Yes.
And Dr. Mike Kishless?
Mike, you have to unmute.
Mike, you only need to unmute.
All right, yes, yes, yes.
Excellent. Do we have Mike Chamia with us yet? Right, so motion carries six zero. So the state of Missouri is under a stay-at-home order, as we all know, through April 24, in order to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in our region. And as a result, Limburg Schools and all St. Louis County school districts are using virtual instruction for students. And this Board of Education workshop is being hosted live online. Tonight's board workshop is being conducted through the use of Zoom and is being streamed live on the district's YouTube channel. So welcome to this year's 2020 Learning Reports. And at this time, I would like to ask Dr. Tara Sparks, our Chief Academic Officer, to give us an outline of tonight's reports, which will be reported by each of our building principals in the district.
Thank you, Karen. I'm excited for this opportunity for our principals to share about the incredible learning that has been happening in our schools over the course of the year. As you know, one of the things that we think is really important with the learning report is that we look at the whole experience of learning for our students within Limburg Schools. So tonight's presentation will really focus on social emotional learning, the four Cs of critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication, as well as personalized learning experiences that students have had. These were areas of priority identified through Dr. Lake's Listening and Learning Tour last year and have continued to be a focus as we continue our work as a district. What we will do after tonight's presentation is stories from principals that are being shared here are going to be compiled in with our academic achievement report to provide that full picture of what learning within Limburg Schools looks like. And that will be available both on the web as well as in print copies for us to have available in our schools. And again, it's really just that focus on making sure we're looking at the whole picture of what learning experiences can be and how they build for student success. As we go through the night tonight, we're going to start with our early childhood learning experiences and then progress through elementary, gifted, and then close out with secondary and ultimately then the high school. Each of our principals, after they're done, after they finish presenting, will open it. I'll open up the floor to any questions that you may have. And then principals will then introduce the next principal who will be presenting. Any questions before we begin? All right, Colin, if you would go ahead and start sharing the slides. And Charlene Ziegler, our Principal of Early Childhood Education, will begin for us.
All right. Colin, I'm not seeing the slides for...
One more, please. Tony, Tony's now giving me permission. There we go. And we are going to now share the screen.
All right, thank you, Tony and Colin both, and Dr. Sparks. And thank you all for the opportunity to share a little bit about what happens in our preschool classrooms every day. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So my first slides really focus on social emotional growth and wellbeing. That is one of our compass goals and really the foundation of what early childhood has always been based upon. It seems like early childhood has worked with social emotional learning for as long as I have been in early childhood, basically because of the learning dispositions that we're able to instill in students, the persistence and the creativity and curiosity and autonomy, all of those skills that we really want as adults and that help us to be successful. The slide here really talks about learning about one's identity. So if you look at the top right corner slide, this project was based on the book The Color of Us by Karen Katz. This student is using several paint colors and a paintbrush, actually, on the back of his hand to try to achieve a skin tone that matches him. And the students talked about everything about their face, their eyes, their nose, their mouth, their skin tone. And then they worked on self-portraits that reflected them specifically. So then you can see on the bottom left, then they also presented that to their peers. They worked on their presentation skills at four years old, answered questions, and described why they made the choices that they did. And then finally, you can see the finished product there. And those products will be hung in the classroom for quite some time. That identity is so important. It helps us to appreciate ourselves and awareness of ourselves and others. And that really leads to acceptance of selves and of self and others. And that's one of our major goals. Next slide, please. Our personalized learning slide. We meet our students' needs individually, obviously, all day, every day. I have a few examples here for you. During group time, children, when they come to early childhood, are just learning how to be a part of a group and learn those responsibilities of what they need to do and those social norms. So one of the difficult things is having the group sit still. And sometimes children really have a hard time with that. That's one of the things that typically by the middle or end of the year, all of the students know. But then every once in a while, we'll have a student who's having a difficult time. So we'll have different types of chairs. We have what we call cube chairs. They give a structure to where they're supposed to be seated. Sometimes they'll sit on circles. Sometimes they will have just some other cube so that they know where they're supposed to sit. And that helps them remember where their body is supposed to be. So if they're the only student in the group who needs that, though, we also have other chairs or other types of cubes that other children just use by choice so that that student never feels singled out. Another thing that we work with a lot are children who are shy when they're entering the classroom or having a hard time separating from their parent. Very important that children learn this skill so that they are able to come into the classroom and then learn. It helps them to learn things about themselves, the interventions that they need to personally take to help keep themselves calm and to help them through those difficulties. Finally, I have a representation of our, some of the visuals from our social emotional learning curriculum. That slide in the middle, the one that says "In the bathroom, I can", that was actually an example of something that we used with a student. He was afraid of using the bathroom, and it was in the midst of toilet training. Our bathrooms can be loud because they're all tile. And so it can be a little daunting for a young student. And then also, they're learning the toilet training also. So what this is, is sort of a roadmap or a guide, a visual in front of them. Children at this age typically, they cannot recognize words like we do, so we use pictures for them. So by utilizing this, that helped him to be able to go into the bathroom focusing on what he needed to do. And we mirror this same practice with children throughout the day. You'll see in our classrooms numerous visuals hanging up, or children will have their own visuals also that they can carry around with them or keep them in their cubby. Next slide, please. Okay, and then finally, our four Cs. I selected critical thinking. What you're looking at here is two classrooms. On the right side, those are two- and three-year-olds. And on the left side, those are three- and four-year-olds. A little bit of difference there in knowledge base and age, certainly. So when those twos and threes are working with the car at the top of the ramp in that top picture, if we were there in the classroom, the teacher would have worked with them for quite some time to be able to manage to the point that they were by themselves with this. And then the students can start making observations and theories. For example, the orange one is the fastest, or the little cars go faster. And we can talk with those students about, well, why do you think that is? And help them to reason through their thoughts. And sometimes it's a learning process that they're just recognizing different attributes to what they're using. Then on the left side, the gators were acting out the itsy-bitsy spider, were working on getting the spider, which is the black thing in the picture, in the top two pictures, to go more quickly down the incline. So you can see a couple of ideas there. What if you try the orange one, thinking maybe the orange one would be faster? Or this bowl has holes in it, but if I move it really fast, the water will go into the cup. And then finally, that bottom one, I'm going to pour the water with the spiders in the cup. Students really try a number of different things, and we give them that freedom to try those things, even though we, as adults, may know that that's not the solution. But we... The confidence and the choice to think through things and know that that's a part of the learning process. And it really just exemplifies what our foundations are that children just learn based on the experience and knowledge that they have. And that's all I have. Any questions? No questions. Okay. So let me go ahead and introduce Dr. Angie Mullman, Principal at Concord, for her section.
Okay, there we go. All right, so is everyone good? Can you hear me okay? Okay, all right, thank you, Charlene. And thank you to our Board of Education for taking the time to hear all of that, our incredible schools during this unprecedented situation. I'm so very proud to be a part of the Concord team. And I would like to commend our teachers for their ability to transition to virtual learning in a matter of weeks. It has been very incredible to watch this happen. Next slide, please. So many of the highlights that I'm sharing with you are a direct result of our focus on our compass plan. Specifically, this year, we wanted to target a way for students to learn and practice self-regulating skills. We accomplished this in several ways. At the beginning of the year, teachers were provided with break boxes for students, and they learned how to create a self-regulating zone in each of their classrooms. So like a little space where kiddos could go if they needed some time to kind of reset and regroup. Additionally, our counselors did an amazing job of teaching our kindergarten through fifth graders about a program called the Zones of Regulation during their weekly counseling lessons. They utilized the different colors that can be seen there in that image to kind of identify their feelings, to recognize them, name them, and then do whatever they needed to do, figure out a way to get back to the green zone. We use this language throughout the school, and it could be heard from anywhere at lunchtime to restorative conversations in the office. Our counselors really emphasized mindful practices such as yoga and breathing techniques used to calm the body. In addition to this common language, we also created the PAL Zone, which stands for the Peace and Loving Zone. This is a space, it was a classroom, where students could use a pass to visit, take a break, and then again, find a way to get themselves back into the green zone. We plan on continuing to have this space in the counseling office next year so that students continue to learn how to use breaks as part of their school day. We also devoted a great deal of professional learning time to designing a system of tiered responses to student needs. At Concord, we really, I felt like, utilized the EduClima platform, which I don't have images of, but you can see that little symbol there, as a way to analyze academic and behavioral data. We used it to support our RTI strategies and then be able to talk about data more efficiently. As early adopters to the program, the Concord staff really used EduClima to identify student needs and document the interventions, which led to just a smoother RTI process. Next slide, please. Thank... Going real-world projects that supported the four Cs. Today, I want to tell you just a little bit about some of them. Now, just said my internet connection was unstable, so hopefully, we're okay. I'm really nervous about that, but we're good. Okay. I'm watching Tara in the corner of my screen. So our fourth graders participated, the project they participated in, which that can be seen on the top left, is called the SOLID Project, which stands for Science of Learning Instrument Design. And this STEAM-based program was in partnership with Boeing and the St. Louis Science Center. And it really challenges students to design and create their own musical instruments by following the steps of the engineering process. Our third grade team participated in what's called the Green Schools Quest. And they worked with their green mentor. And their project that they came up with was a sustainability project focused on recycling. Utilizing the Trex program, students collected plastic bags and analyzed their impact on the environment. And those are just some of like the very specific projects that happened. But then all of our teachers worked closely with our librarian, Paula Gray, in designing collaborative lessons throughout the year. And then extension of these programs based in our library, one of those was we hosted a night at the Magic House at their maid facility. And then the students really enjoyed being able to see the activities that we did in the classroom carried over into a space out in the community. We also, this year, did something that I was very impressed with, which was our, we designed two studio classroom spaces. So there was one in third grade and one in fourth grade. And we took down the wall in those classrooms. And the main benefit that the teachers really reported being able to see was that they could meet their students. And really even, all of our teachers are differentiating, but this allowed them to kind of do their groupings really focused on student needs. So they could challenge those who excelled and then target the holes that needed to be filled for other students. We also reported that they were able to utilize more teaching styles, so one-on-one teaching, one teach, one assist, teaming, and alternative teaching. And I was able to see these classrooms really focused on the four Cs throughout their lessons. And that bulletin board is, strange it is, it is, but that kind of symbolizes the different skills that were being used for each of the soft skills that are needed in that environment. Okay, next slide, please. So when thinking about personalized learning, I feel like our staff was really able to take this idea to the next level with their elementary students. And it's interesting because the work that they have been doing all year almost prepared them for this crazy adventure that we're having now with virtual learning. And it made that transition almost seem effortless because they had already had so many things in place. All of our upper grades utilized learning menus through Google Classroom. And each menu had some different examples of must-dos and may-do. So things that were requirements for the class and then optional work that they could participate in. And grades K through five are all using CSO. They use it as a reflection tool, so for students to like think about or showcase or highlight their learning. And then they were also able to give maybe the more traditional assignments that they could then give feedback almost immediately with students. Another platform that we used, online platform, was DreamBox. And this program allowed students to work through their math skills at their own pace, which is computer adaptive, meaning that the lessons are really based on what the students are needing. So I feel like, all in all, we've had, even though this end of the year is a little bit different, we've really had some incredible work done and able to accomplish at Concord this year. So at this time, I would like to introduce someone that we will miss very greatly in the coming year.
Angie, can I pause you for just a second?
Oh, yes, you may.
Do we have any questions for Concord or any?
No, they don't. They don't.
Do have one quick question, but it should be an easy one. No, I'm just curious, that SOLID program is really neat. Did the kids have like a concert or anything after they created their instruments?
Yes, so they, actually, the instruments are then showcased down at Sheldon Music Hall. And Miss Creach takes a group of them down, and they get to highlight their instruments. So it's very, you know, authentic and real world.
Very cool.
Okay, now, are there any more questions? Are we good?
Yes. So the question, maybe Dr. Sparks can answer it later. I'm looking at CSO, DreamBox, and this is all excellent, especially toward e-learning at the end of the school year. Do we have a district-wide? Do we purchase this for all the elementary schools, these programs? Or is it just individual by school?
Both are district-wide.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, well, now I'll introduce the amazing Dr. Jody Oliver from Crestwood Elementary.
Good evening, Board of Education and our Superintendent's Cabinet. Thank you so much for letting us come to brag about our schools tonight. It's always a fun night to do so. So I get, I have the pleasure of talking a little bit about Crestwood Elementary and everything that we've done this school year. So Colin, could you go to the next slide, please? All right, so our first slide, again, is about Limburg Life, which, as you know, is something that's been, we've been working on as a district. So we will be talking about the social emotional learning and wellbeing that goes along with Limburg Life. If you look at the top picture on the slide in the middle, you'll see two high school students there, it's Mackenzie Heine and Tess Olischlager. They wrote a social emotional learning curriculum as part of one of their courses at the high school. So this year, they came during our staff meetings once a month for about 15 minutes and talked about the different, the five competencies in CASL, which is a social emotional learning wheel that has all of the different areas of social emotional learning. So they taught our teachers about each one of those competencies. And then for the month, they went into a grade-level classroom and taught lessons in those, in that competency. So they were able to push into all of, I think, but two of our grade-level classrooms because of our current situation. But they were working with our counselor, Ann Klatch, in doing this. One of the other things with social emotional learning is our counselors this year have been utilizing the Second Step Curriculum for bullying with all lessons K-5. At Crestwood, we also had 10 different teachers who were piloting the Second Step Program for class meetings in the classroom every single day. So that was a huge piece of social emotional learning every single day at Crestwood this year. And we saw many big gains and strides with different kids learning about themselves and how they respond to things that happen to them. To the right there, at the beginning of the year, that's our P teacher, Mr. DC, who we are super proud of at this time. He was just named Limburg's Teacher of the Year. So we did a lot with just intentionally building relationships. At the beginning of the year, we put all of the students' pictures up, and we all picked several students that we were going to connect with to really build them and bring them more into the school community. So DC is a really great person at building those relationships. So this was, these were her kindergarten kids playing basketball. So he went and visited them during a game. And then we also kept on with building relationships this year. We were part of the Homework's Home Visit Program. So the picture below is Mrs. Dupree, a second-grade teacher in the home of one of our families. So we did, we had around 175, I think it ended up being, home visits this year with kids in Crestwood. So we had so many of our teachers, we had 17 different teachers that were interested and were able to do some home visits this year. Then to the left is also part of the Home Visit Program. This is our family dinner, so that's Mrs. Pickler there with kids around them. We fed the families and asked them to come in. And then the parents were able to learn about reading and important things that they should do at home to help their children to continue to read. So that was a great partnership with the Homework's Company this year, and we just couldn't have asked for better success in the first year. Above that, as our buddy program, we have students that are paired up, and we have a book of the month, and it's always about a different topic about equity and diversity. So this month, those two, they talked about similarities and differences. So what was the same about them and what was different? And then, so we did a lot of learning about that with different literature and partnerships this year. Colin, next slide, please. All right, for the four Cs this year, I feel like at Crestwood, we really focused on student agency. So we had several groups of students who were very passionate about doing something for their environment and for their community. So in the bottom left, we also participated in the Green Schools Quest. We had students, fifth-grade group that really decided on their own. They called themselves the Save Our Planet Group. They partnered with our Student Leadership Council and our Green Schools Quest mentor. And they came up with things that they felt needed to change at Crestwood and at Limburg, which you may have heard about. The Styrofoam trays is a big topic. They are very strong about feeling like that needs to change. So they've presented at one of the board advisory groups. They've also, we also hosted Planet Palooza at Crestwood this year. And that's what these students are doing here in partnership with Karen Munning, one of our teachers. They were presenting that evening. So we've, they've done a lot of work there. The bottom right is another group of girls who showed agency. They partnered to raise, not funds, but things for a local animal shelter. So they ended up donating a huge pallet from Nestle Purino. One of our parents found out that they were really advocating for this shelter. So she donated a huge pallet of dog food, cat food, kitty litter, and it all went to this local animal shelter because of the agency these girls felt to help, to help their community. And the middle is one picture for a PDL unit that was written in conjunction with our fifth-grade teachers and our music teacher. So they really had a good time collaborating with that, and that was one of our end products with the musical instrument. The top right, our career breakfast that we've held this year. So we've asked parents to come in once a month to talk about their careers. So this was a pediatric surgeon, and she brought in the tools, and she talked about what they're used for. She used her daughter and dressed her up. So we just had two parents a month come in to talk about their different careers and what the skills they needed to be able to have that career. So just really starting to get kids understanding about careers and how school connects to a job. Our PTO also worked with us on that to provide breakfast for those who did come to hear about the different careers. The top left is, these are students from Concord and Crestwood that were selected for the All-State Choir. So there are about 400 students across the state. So this is the first time that we were aware of that Limburg had elementary students participate in this All-State Choir. So that was a great collaboration as well. In the middle is more work on diversity and equity. And our new art teacher is really big in that area and skin tone and how we're all a little bit different. So this is, these are self-portraits and how they have been created, created in mixing color and understanding more about diversity and equity in the lens of art. So Colin, if you could go ahead and move to the next slide. And our last slide is personalized learning. And this is some of the same that you'll see, I think, trends you'll see across many of the elementary schools. The top right is a girl using seesaws, you just saw at Concord as well. So she's explaining how she has now learned a standard. And that teacher will review the seesaw post to see if the student has understood so that she can then move on in math standards. So that's evidence of learning there. We also have two examples of menus in the middle and the top-left corner. And then one of the activities in the bottom-left corner has come from the must-do and may-do. So those students are... And then one of the activities in the bottom left corner has come from the must do and may do. So those students are, are participating in those menus. And this is also a picture from one of our classrooms who has participated in the technology pilot this year. And the bottom bright picture, picture is through, is a picture of one of our students who is in a resource classroom and is understanding foundational skills of organizing and delivering. So that is some personalized learning angles for him as well. All right, if we could go ahead and move on to the next slide and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Jody, one question. How did you get connected with homeworks? And is there, are there certain characteristics about your student population that make that a, a partnership, I guess, or eligible for their program?
So I believe it's open to any schools, but this year Tara had come to us at the be, actually around this time last year. And the three schools that are Title I schools were asked to come in and listen to a presentation by homeworks. And then from there, we talked with our teachers and we looked to see if there would be an interest in moving forward. So I believe Dressel and Crestwood moved forward. We had a huge overwhelming interest at Crestwood and we had to actually put the brakes on because there were so many teachers interested. They wanted to continue and would have had way more visits had we allowed them and not said, well, wait a second because there is a monetary component that goes along with that. So we would have had many, many, many more visits because we had, we went past, I think, the amount we had originally just slotted for. So the teachers at Crestwood were so excited. It was, it, the parents loved it, the kids loved it, and I do think it will be a really strong tool for building relationships and building family interactions in the years coming forward as well.
Thanks. I can just tag on to that. When we started working with homeworks this year, we, we focused, as Jody said, specifically on Title I schools because of the parent engagement component and wanting to really ensure that we had a strong focus on that. As this year's progressed, homeworks is starting to revisit what their program looks like. So that is a question mark as we go into next year because they're making structural changes within what their expectations are, what their partner school, what they want their partner schools to look like and how they want partner school, schools to connect. And they're in the process of changing everything. So it's really on hold right now when we think about where to go into next year because we were hoping that we could continue to expand that, but that may not actually be the case.
Would it be possible to replicate it in some aspects?
Yes, but there's a lot of funding streams that homeworks has in place that help to offset the cost of that. So any way that we replicate would be on a smaller scale because we would lose their funding streams. So it's still an ongoing conversation. We were before the, before we transitioned to virtual education. That was, that was what we were investigating with our teachers who participated this year. How do we continue to go forward knowing that we might not be able to do it in the way that we did this year?
Okay.
And Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, homeworks, they were going to be here tonight, right? And then we took them off the agenda, weren't they?
Next, the end of April.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then for my clarification, Jody, I think I know the answer to this question, but the two high school students, did that come out of English PBL that they did their junior year? Was that their project?
It was, yes.
So that, that's an awesome example of how our high school kids took an initiative to solve a world problem or not a world problem, a, an issue or a concern or a need in our local community and then went out and did something with it. So that, that's amazing. That's awesome. Great.
Yes, they, they did an excellent job too, just with teaching the kids. So it wasn't just presenting to staff, but their interactions with the students were very powerful as well.
It's awesome. So kudos, Eric, also to you guys on that, your ELA teachers for having that. So. Alright, I'm done.
Alright, well, if I don't have any more questions, I would be so honored to introduce Dr. Patrick Schenning Case, the principal at Dressel Elementary.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Oliver. You guys have some amazing things going on at Crestwood. Crestwood, thanks for sharing. Hey, also just good luck next year on your new adventure, like speaking particularly for the elementary principals. We'll, we'll definitely be missing you, you know, so don't be a stranger. Please reach out to us. Alrighty.
Thanks.
Okay, so it's my pleasure to be here today to represent all the teachers and staff at Dressel. To talk to you guys about the wonderful things that we've done at Dressel. But I also want to just thank all of our, our teachers and staff as well for the work they've done this year. As it pivoted into virtual learning as well. So shout. Alright, Colin, next one, please. Alright, so Limburg Life and the social emotional learning wellbeing at Dressel. So we had a campus goal this year to integrate some more social emotional practices into our classrooms and schoolwide. There are a variety of activities and learning that we did to support this goal. So the first was, we were able to add, or we were able to support students and staff with two full-time counselors this year. And that, that was important for, for two reasons. It helped for us to be more responsive to students, staff and family needs on a much more consistent basis. But it also allowed our counselors to get in the classrooms every two weeks. Previous years, it was, we'd be getting into a classroom every three into three and a half weeks. This is just important for us to be able to implement that the counseling curriculum with fidelity. So I loved having two full-time counselors at Dressel. Just like Crestwood, I think, talked about, or maybe Concord talked about, our counselors spent the first semester going through the second steps bowling curriculum. And that just helps kids identify bowling, kind of the steps on how to handle it and then how to also report it. Much like Crestwood this year, we had seven teachers who piloted the second steps social emotional curriculum in all grade levels. So that curriculum focused on helping students manage emotions and build just positive peer relationships. So in the fall, we had students and staff that were, were part of this pilot, complete the Sabers rating scales. And these rating scales examine student academic, social emotional behaviors. I know it's kind of hard to see, but if you look at that graph there in the middle, you're going to see two different lines. One line represents the teacher's response and the other line represents the student response. And what we started trying to look at those to see some large discrepancies or, or some maybe ahas we didn't know about some students. But next year, we're really looking at, be able to give it in the fall and the spring and just look for some growth. So that was used part of our Sabers that we had. Next, just kind of highlight of our flyer power. So flyer power, you can obviously the picture in the middle, but the one that rise, the infographic that a teacher developed of that classroom. And that's a new therapeutic program that had the full support of special school district. The teacher and their service about 23 students. And I, I kind of like to think of it as a home base for, for our students who have weaknesses in their social emotional skills. They spend a lot of their time working on emotional regulation skills. If you go in there, you might see them role-playing or, or in a certain curriculum or reviewing strategies or playing some certain games, but anything to help reinforce all their emotional regulation skills. They're very goal-oriented. Students are very aware of where they are in, in relation to their goal and making progress. They have data binders. There's data up on the walls in the room, so you can easily talk to them about it, but kids are very in tune with that. And just at our last program review before spring break, we were looking and noticed that almost all of our students in that classroom were either, had either met their goal or making significant progress on their SEV goals. So it's pretty outstanding work going there. It's going to be something that's continually growing. But one last thing that, that I would just add is that the supports in that, that room go along with the non-violent crisis intervention de-escalation. So if a kid is coming in, there were some crises, everything in that room is set up to support that. So whether it's the, the way the room is designed or the break space or verbiage at the break space or the way of the social worker and the, and the teacher interacts with the student, all that is geared towards helping those students out. The last thing I just want to highlight in that area is our Giving Day Assembly and that's right there in the, the middle. Yeah, so each grade level chose a service learning project. And some of the examples were writing letters to kids in the hospital or sending candy to the troops. Our character club is creating weighted tools that students were going to be able to access during, during their classrooms next year. They didn't get to make those because of where we are now, but it's, those were some examples. A, a group of students presented the project at our school assembly. But this just was a great way for our student body to kind of see how we can give back to our community. Alright, Colin, next one, please. Alright, so four Cs. So another campus goal was to continue to incorporate our four Cs within our curriculum. So this past year or last year ended the, the pilot program for Project Lead the Way. So this year we developed a, it was called Design Lab and that was part of our five block rotation. And this was all about the four Cs for our kids. Anytime you walked in there, kids were creating, collaborating, sharing things, getting messy, loud. A lot of times they were out in the hallway creating things, they're very, had to close their doors. But always just having a lot of fun and learning about a lot of different things. Some of the topics were coding, engineering, creation challenge. And we even had a partnership with Missouri Medical Gardens where they learned about plant genetics. They, they were researching that and they were just looking at plant life and plant cycles and things like that. So a, a neat partnership. Just a shout out to Midge Lembeck, who, who was the teacher in there. And last year she was a, a math intervention. So she stepped into this role this year and has done, done a great job. And we talk about the, the middle picture. So this is our, a picture of our third grade. And this year, our teachers created a cross-content unit on different weather systems and just patterns and things like that. So the students at the beginning of the year rotated through each of the classrooms through different teachers to learn about these weather systems. And they had some really great authentic learning experiences. One of them was the Emergency Management Director down in Joplin. And he was there just to, he shared, you know, that experience with the students. He, he shared some safety about, about that, that tornado there. And then just kind of what things that they have done since then and how that kind of transformed life down there in Joplin. So it was really good for our kids to hear somebody who actually lived that event. Another authentic experience was Steve Templeton from Channel Four. He was, he came in and talked about weather, but he, he really talked about forecasters' tools and what they use to help us at home if we need to seek shelter. He also got to answer about 60,000 questions from third graders, which was interesting to hear what, what's kind of in their mind. But able to reach out to other meteorologists. So to demonstrate their learning, they had to use what they learned to build a safety shelter to protect them from kind of a particular situation. So they collaborated in groups and it kind of ended with an expo. And that's that picture where parents and grandparents, anybody could come in, other students, and kind of walk through and talk with them about their project and their, and their safety shelter. Next thing I'll just share in the four Cs as looking at the picture in the top right. That, our, our fifth grader started off the year with this question of how can they, as fifth graders, show leadership and make a difference in their school and community? And so the kids got together and collaborated about some different ideas that they could do. And this group in the top right chose the Friends of Limburg, which is a Special Olympics event for, it's going to be a new event for special, a new Special Olympics event just for elementary students just in Limburg. What the kids had to critically think and create activities that met the, the diverse needs of the student population. And so you can see they met with Coach Mulvaney, who's the APE teacher for Special School District. I think at least two times to just kind of get feedback on the activities that they were planning. But it was really, it was neat to see them work with him to get those ideas and their activities changing over time. But they also discussed like the logistics of the day and what that would look like. And then they presented to the PTO, the Dressel PTO to ask for some, some, some things from them. So we didn't get to do it this year. We're scheduled for April 3rd, but going into next year, we, we have a lot of great ideas to pull this off. So, next, please. Alright, so the first example I want to show you in personalized learning was, is the one with the student, the microphone. At the beginning of the year, we create passion plans, projects with our teachers. So teachers choose any topic that they want to explore and grow in. Mrs. Moss, a third grade teacher, decided she wanted to use, utilize podcasts a little bit more in the classroom. So she had to do a lot of work of figuring out best podcasts for kids and how to use them and how to record them. And she put a lot of time and effort into them. One of the things they did is they started by just listing podcasts as a class. And then she created some different podcast lists for students to listen to. But another authentic experience she had is she reached out to Matt Miller. I don't know if you've heard of him. He's the author of Ditch that textbook. He was in town talking to a local high school. And he was able to swing by Dressel and talk to our class for about an hour on how he uses and makes podcasts. So it was great for, for our kids to hear from an expert in the field on, on how, how to create podcasts. In the bottom right, that's an example of a learning menu that you would see in Mrs. Roushoff's first grade classroom. So these change daily based on feedback from students that she's receiving. Some of them are like the computer programs that you've seen from seesaw, the dream box, the freckle. And there, now, there are different variations based on the students. But they get to kind of move through these however they, they choose on that day. Just one thing I'd highlight too is Concord, they, they talked about the zones of regulation. There's also social emotional check-in that they can communicate with the teachers. That's, that's listed there. And just the last example I'd share with you with personalized learning is in the center. There at the center top is a picture of our kindergarteners and students were discussing communities this year. And they had the opportunity to turn their whole hallway into a community. This is something kindergarten teachers and I have talked about, Dr. Lake, about knocking down walls and turning into a big one shopping center. So anyway, don't, don't mean to get off on a tangent. So the kids were able to, in their classes, brainstorm the different types of shops they'd want to see in a community. Then they, they designed the shop, what they needed, the jobs and the materials. And you can see that a lot of that's created by the teacher or the students in there. But just lots of different academic skills that the, the teachers could then pull out from there and work with the kids. They use a lot of this during their play-based learning at the end of the day. So I appreciate everyone's time tonight, listening to all the, the great things we have going on at Dressel. What questions might you have about us? Perfect. Then it is my pleasure to introduce to you the amazing Mr. Thompson.
Well, thank you, Dr. Schenning Case. Love hearing all the wonderful things that are taking place at Dressel. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for a chance to share some great and exciting opportunities that's happening here at Kinderly Elementary School. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for being very supportive. Really appreciate the positive phone calls, the reminders for sure, encouraging emails. It really does mean a lot. So thank you very much for that. I like to share how Kinderly supports learning, our Limburg Life, social and emotional learning and wellbeing. Beginning with the Kinderly, beginning with Kinderly, one of our compass plan goals was to create a positive climate and culture with our staff, students, parents and community. For our staff, over the summer, we planned events where our entire, our entire, our Kinderly team could come together to socialize, bond and get to know each other. Staff members were invited to do a, for a bowling night where all of the teachers got a chance to come out and show their bowling skills. We met significant others and we got a chance to meet their, their kids as well. So we also had an opportunity to visit Kiwanis County in Eureka, Missouri to tackle some team building activities and some fun games. Happy to say that we had about 17 staff members to join in on the great outdoor adventure. We, it was pretty cool to see everyone working together, sharing their thoughts and how to complete certain obstacles. One of our Kinderly staff members invited our entire Kinderly team to their home for social gathering where we ate food, played games and continued to build our strong partnerships. I feel that these events gave us a good chance to get to know each other in a relaxed, comfortable setting. And it was a good way to start off the school year. Oh, thank you for changing the slide. Thank you. Another way Kinderly supports social emotional learning with, I was with our fourth, fifth graders, Character Choir, who, which is led by our music teacher, Mr. Franzel. Kinderly's Character Choir was asked to perform at the district's senior citizens luncheon at Truman Middle School. Our community seniors really enjoyed the presentation. Our community seniors really enjoyed the presentation. And then at the conclusion of the program, our fourth and fifth grade students had a chance to visit and say thank you to our community seniors for their involvement with our school district. This year, one of our character committee's goals was to highlight, if you look at this, the center where you see flyers and and so our character committee came up with the acronym Flyers, which stands for Friendship, Leadership, Yet Mindset, Empathy, Responsibility and Service. So anytime that a student displayed any of these character traits, a flyer ticket will be given by an adult, any student in the building. As part of our afternoon announcements, one student, her grade levels, their name would be shared along with the character trait they displayed. At the end of each month, during our school-wide assembly, two students' names were pulled and shared. Those students' names that were pulled had a chance to be part of our character committee celebration. This year, if you look at the picture that is at the, I guess, the third column top right. This year, Kinderly's Ability Awareness Day was part of our Unity Week. We had a number of professionals to visit our classrooms to share information about students with special needs. We wanted to help make our, help in making our students more aware and more understanding about students with special needs. One of our Kinderly parents, who has a child with special needs, delivered a presentation to our fourth and fifth grade students in the library. Was definitely pleased and moved by our students' engagement and their interaction with the presenter. She did a great job of painting a picture of how we should treat anyone regardless of their abilities or their background. Next slide, please. Now we're going to move to the four C's, critical thinking, creativity, communication and collaboration. Definitely, it's amazing to watch the engagement of our students, our teachers and our parents. It definitely connects us. So we're going to get started with the communication that is, where is the picture of it? It's the first column down at the bottom. If you take a look at that last picture, the column at the bottom, you'll see our staff and our parents taking part of our kindergarten growth and literacy night. In January, our kindergarten teachers, reading specialists, our instructional design coach offered our kindergarten parents an opportunity to learn and to explore about the kindergarten curriculum. Materials were shared, parents, so they can practice with these particular pieces at home with their kiddos. Some of the activities that were explained were letter sounds, letter formations, rhyme, rhyming, word families, onset and rhyme. Teachers also shared Hagerty activities to practice with their kids. We got a lot of positive feedback from our parents about this, and so we're going to continue it in the future. If you look at the second picture and the first column, it's our kindergarten students. Were engaged in a critical thinking activity. Students were given materials where they had to construct a bridge and record how much weight that bridge could hold. Teams then had to present to the class how much weight their bridge held and why, and explained why. That process, the thought process of kindergarteners was truly amazing. And it's kind of great to see them interact with one another and think through how to solve that particular project. The second picture is a column is our third graders who are doing a follow-up activity. Students had a chance to learn about the scientific method and also if it's important. Students worked through the steps of the scientific method by experimenting with slime. Each group had to test what would happen when slime is made without a certain ingredient. So they had to explain if the missing ingredient was an important part of the recipe and why. Students shot down their observations and were able to share their data with the class. And now we're going to take a look at the last picture in the third column. This is where this year we thought our students would enjoy a live theater performance. So we reached out to the Metro Theater Company where a cast came out to our schools to perform a play. The play was called The Girl Who Swallowed a Cactus. Our students absolutely loved the performance at the, at the, at each scene, students were leaning and listening. They were laughing at the funny parts and they applauded at the conclusion. Our students, when our students are asked questions, just about every hand in the gymnasium went up. So I think that our kiddos really enjoy that particular activity. And lastly, I like to share how Kinderly supports learning through personalized learning. So if you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Of course, our students take part in Dreambox and CSO and problem-based learning and learning menus. But I also wanted to highlight some other ways that Kinderly focused on personalized learning. Our fifth grade students, our fifth grade teachers, I'm sorry, have incorporated Genius Hour this year. This is a time where students get a chance to pick a topic that they are passionate about. Students researched their topics of interest, documented their findings to determine how they would like to present their learning. Most of the students share their projects they built through either with a project or a presentation that they've created. At the end of the term, students had an opportunity to share their Genius Hour project. Usually it was held in our Twenty First Century space. Another way that we've have vested in personalized learning this year is Kinderly invited several book authors to do presentations in our library. Students love hearing about the different characters, the plots, the setting and how characters were created. And after the author's presentation and question and answer session was completed, we had students, several students to stay in small groups for more in-depth backstory about how to become an author. And lastly, the school year, Kinderly added two more teachers who decided to transform their classrooms into a more flexible learning space. Students had the freedom to move throughout the classrooms, areas where they lay their breast. Students had an option to learn at a standing high table. They could learn at a lap desk on a floor, beanbag chairs or yoga ball. And also in different areas in the classroom. Students were thrilled to have these new learning spaces and our classroom teachers are asking if we can buy more furniture. Thank you for a chance to share some new and exciting things that are taking place here at Kinderly. Are there any questions? Wow, really good. Great. Thank you. Thank you for letting me introduce, thank you. And let me introduce to you the wonderful Dr. Christina Phillips, who will share some great things that are happening at Long Elementary School.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I am very excited to share with you some of the wonderful things that are happening at Long. Next slide, please. All right, so to start off, one of our compass plan goals at Long Elementary focused on social emotional learning this year. Which was also a direction for the district as one of their compass goals. One of the things I wanted to talk about first was our social emotional behavioral or SEB room. That was piloted this year at Long. This was a collaboration with Special School District this year. So this was a room, or this, I'm sorry, is a room that we have, like I said, a collaboration with Special School District. This room serves students who need tier three supports as identified in their IEP. This room has really transformed the climate of the entire school to better serve these students with these needs by building a relationship with the students with these needs and the special education teacher who services the classroom. This room would not be possible without the support of the area coordinator who helped us with the room, Sarah Davidus, and the teacher who's helped us facilitate this room, Chris Goodwrights. In addition to our one amazing school counselor, Kim Maddock and Joy Long. It's really been a team effort. And this room, I'm very hopeful that we're able to keep it with the staffing from Special School District next year and the space at Long because it really serves our students well. Also, I wanted to talk about the calming corners and calming kits that we implemented at Long this year. That began with some professional learning in the beginning of the year. Every classroom was given a calming kit with some professional learning in August. A calming kit is really a sensory kit that each teacher was given and trained on in the beginning of the year. We wanted every classroom to have a baseline of tools in their classroom that they had and knew how to use and could train their students to use. So if students needed to take a break, they could take a break within their classroom and knew how to self-regulate their emotions. So that if they were feeling upset, they didn't have to leave the classroom and leave the learning space necessarily to take a break. So that was something we did implement in every classroom and every learning space at Long this year. Something else I wanted to talk about is Spark Families. This is something that was really a passion project of a group of teachers. Last year that grew, this year we're so excited and proud. Of Spark Families is an hour every month that students get to go into multi-aged groups, K through five, with teachers that have similar interests. So really anything that you are passionate about or interested in, non-academic, that you also can find a teacher that's interested in can be your Spark Family. So we have about eighteen Spark Families right now at Long. And they are everything from yoga to knitting, to cooking, to running, to crocheting, we have yoga, we have Legos, anything that you're interested in. And you spend an hour doing that activity. And this really helps build relationships with students and adults and help that foundational piece in our school that help teachers and students alike build those relationships. And that's been very, very powerful for us and we're excited to keep that going next year. And the kids always ask, is it a Spark Friday? They love those so much. So we're very excited and we were supported by our PTO with funds too. Because obviously if you're cooking and crocheting, you, you need a lot of stuff for that. So you can see in the picture, in the bottom, we were doing some cooking and we have some kids who are painting rocks because they wanted to be in an interior designing Spark Family and decorate around our school. The last thing I wanted to talk about with our social emotional learning was the tier one learning that happens in our classrooms. You've heard a lot about the zones of regulation and things like that. So I wanted to talk about this group of three first graders that you see at the bottom here. We really worked hard in our classrooms to give students the ownership of their emotional vocabulary this year. So these three boys here, they've learned their, they've learned their emotional vocabulary through the zones of regulation. So they're talking about the red zone and one of their words they're talking about is miserable. And that's in the red zone, but they've learned about the intensity of the word. And you can see up there, they have a QR code where they've talked about acting out the word and presenting it to their peers. And just really giving kids the ownership of identifying their emotions and naming it. So that when there is a problem or they are upset about something and they talk to myself or an assistant principal or a counselor, they can name it. Because we feel like giving them that power is really important, that they need to be able to name how they're feeling. So that's been a big goal for us. Next slide, please. The four C's, last year, our compass goal was really to have our teachers and our students comfortable with the four C's and embedding them in daily instruction. This year, we wanted to take it a step further and we wanted some authentic experiences for our students. So I wanted to highlight a few of the examples of how we did that. So one of the examples that I wanted to highlight was something we did with our whole school. Kababi Bayak, and his photo is the bottom one in front of the mural. We had Kababi Bayak as an artist in residency for about seven to eight days in August and September, and it was part of our library redesign that we began. And he is a local artist and he came to work with our kiddos in all grades. And this was an opportunity for students to see creativity, to see an artist working. But he also collaborated with our kids and communicated with them. We had students who were interviewing him and they helped collaborate by talking about what he could add into it. And it was a very interactive experience for our kids. We also had Madco Dance Performance, a local dance studio, come in and work with our fifth grade. The entire fifth grade read the book Restart. And then they got to work with this local dance company and critically think about the themes in the book. And then once they critically thought about it, they were able to create creatively think about how they can communicate that through dance and rhythm and then communicate that out to the entire school and to their parents. So that was a very authentic experience that our fifth graders got to experience. And the, the best thing was having a fourth grader come up to me and ask me, do I get to do that when I'm in fifth grade? So that's when you know, that's when you know it was good. So I actually just got the email today from Madco asking if we want to reserve dates. And I was like, yes, we do. So that was a very powerful experience. Next slide, please. The last thing I want to talk about is our personalized learning. So one thing that we implemented this year at Long is what I need or win time. And this was something to personalize the learning for all students so that we could differentiate and really work hard, work smarter, not harder. So one of our goals this year was to look at our students, not just as students in one classroom, but look at a grade level as a whole. So during our PLC time, when we're looking at data, and I'll use third grade as an example because the graphic I have here is from third grade. If they're meeting in a PLC and they're looking at data and they're seeing, they're looking at math data and they're seeing some kids who need some enrichment and some kids who need some reteaching on something during their win time, which is thirty minutes every day. How can they use that time to use flexible grouping and split kids up? And do some reteaching with some of the kids and do some enrichments with some of the other kids and mix their kids up because it's not just your kids, it's all of our kids. So this thirty-minute daily slot is our what I need time. It's looking at all kids need to learn, so how can we use that time to either enrich or reteach? And every grade level approaches it a little bit differently, but we're looking at it as PLC data to reach all kids. So that's something that we started this year, we're continuing to tweak, but we're very excited about some of the results that we've seen. And also part of our compass plan was not only to personalize our learning for kids, but for teachers. So we realized that our learning for teachers can't be the same for every teacher, just like our learning for kids isn't the same for every kid. So we wanted our students, our teachers to have the opportunity to see and learn at their own pace. So this was an ongoing Google form that you see a snippet up here. So teachers were able to put in this document, different things they would like to observe. And then instructional design coach could then figure out coverage for them so they could go make those observations and then debrief with them afterwards. Those were onsite visitations and then we also worked out if an offsite was more appropriate based on their professional growth plan. We could figure that out for them as well. So that was one way that we helped personalize learning for our teachers. All right, before I introduce the next principal, is there any questions? All right, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. It was wonderful to hear about the great things going on at Long. And I always love to hear about the wonderful things going on across the district from my other colleagues. I'm excited to share the amazing things that my students and staff are implementing at Sappington. Can you please go to the next slide? So at the end of last year, our staff gave us feedback about our compass goal number three around social emotional learning and said that it was very important that we provided more supports for our students as well as add more tools to our staff's toolbox on how to support our students with their social emotional learning. So over the summer, I was able to collaborate with our Special School District area coordinator. And we came up with baskets for each classroom to put in their R and R spot. So last year, teachers implemented R and R spots in their classroom. And R and R can stand for whatever the student needs, rest, relaxation, rejuvenation, refocus. But they struggled with understanding what tools to put in that R and R spot. For the summer, I was able to create a basket for each learning space. So not just the classrooms, but if our students are in art, if they're in music, if they're in library, those baskets are still in those spaces. And they know how to utilize the tools to help them self-regulate. Additionally, in August, all of our Additionally, in August, all of our staff were trained on the Zones of Regulation. And one of our special school district teachers, she co-taught lessons with our general education teachers on identifying those different zones and its common language around the building. So no matter where a student is in the building, we can ask them which zone they're in, and they're able to tell us. And we're also, as staff members, able to have a conversation with them on strategies they can use to either go to the green zone or identify why they are in a particular zone. Additionally, feedback from our staff. We had our R and R room last school year, but it was only available if the classroom teacher took their entire class. So feedback from our staff over the summer was that they loved the R and R room, but not every student needed it at the same time. So it would be a great opportunity if we can figure out how to utilize other adults to manage the room. But we were able to receive items from the Lindbergh School Foundation to put in our R and R rooms, such as mats, yoga balls, sound machines, Play-Doh, different puzzles, different things like that. So this summer, my assistant principal and I, we worked out a schedule where our building assistants could manage the R and R room. And this year, we were able to get it at about three to three and a half hours a day this whole year. And the teachers, if they felt as though the classroom R and R room didn't need it more than the classroom, the class R and R spot, send them to our R and R room. And our building assistants were also trained on the Zones of Regulation. And when the student enters the room, you have a data collection form where they're able to identify their zone, they're able to say what they need as far as tools in the R and R room, and then they also check out and they identify their zone as well. What we love about it is that it not only helps with our response to intervention process, but myself, my assistant principal, my counselor, and our school psychologist, we get an automatic notification when a student is in the R and R room, and that helps build our relationships with their students and the teachers on how to support the students. We also have play workshop with our kindergarten team, and with them implementing flexible classroom placements this year, they were able to form relationships with all of the students, and all of the students were able to form relationships with other students that were placed in other classrooms. So when they have play workshop, typically about once a week, students are able to choose which classroom they would like to go to, and it could be based on imaginary play, building, painting, anything like that. But a kindergarten teacher also teaches a social emotional learning lesson before they go to the classroom of their choice. So again, we're using that common language in the building across the grade levels, and it starts in our kindergarten level. As you know, last year, a conversation that we had with staff was about mirrors and windows, and that again aligns with compass goal number three, equitable practice. So our librarian this year, he collaborated with classroom teachers, especially our English language learner teacher and our special school district teacher, and we were able to identify different abilities, different backgrounds of our Sappington students. And he devised grade level book sets for those hard grade levels to reflect our Sappington students. So we were increasing diversity classroom sets with our classroom library. Next slide, please. Our compass goal two aligns with the Four Cs. So at the end of, or actually last year, our classroom teachers really got in the habit of looking at the Four Cs before they planned a lesson or activities, and then they align the lesson and activities around the Four Cs. This year, we became more intentional with our students guiding their learning around the Four Cs, where our teachers are learning how to be more of a facilitator, and our students are more of the teacher, so they're collaborating and communicating with each other and showcasing their understanding of different concepts to the class, to the teacher. But our teachers are learning how to take a step back and allow our students to fail and problem solve with their learning. We also looked at our learning spaces around the Four Cs. So this school year, I was able to purchase learning stairs for our entire second grade level, and that was so they could learn how to be more intentional with their instruction and reflection and feedback. And it's movable furniture where the students can perform around it, they can collaborate around it. And the last picture on the right was a picture that one of my first grade teachers sent me, and she said, hey, I just want to let you know that I grabbed some learning stairs from the second grade, from the second grade classroom, and my students really liked it. I was able to do so much more with their instruction and their learning. So I responded with, oh, are you trying to hint with telling me that you would like learning stairs for your classroom? And she said, well, if you say so. But it was again, looking at how our furniture and our learning spaces are also a component of the Four Cs. Next slide, please. We also had our classroom teachers collaborate with our librarian for a library on demand weeks where they looked at different units of study, and they collaborated on how to co-teach and support each other around the Four Cs with unit of studies. So that was a big growth opportunity for our staff members of taking students' learning outside of the general ed class and also looking at how our librarian can support our students and our teachers with their learning around the Four Cs. I was also proud of a first grade teacher and a second grade teacher, they had a common unit of study in writing. So they mixed all of their students up, so we had one first grade class and one second grade class. They mixed all of their students up. They utilized the pod area, which we call studios, in the classroom, and they took the standards and they looked at where the students were in relationship to those standards and what they needed as far as reteaching and enrichment, and they were able to form small groups of mixed abilities and mixed grade levels with first and second grade, and our students enjoyed it. They love collaborating with other students outside of their classroom, and the teachers loved it because they were actually able to meet the students where they were and enhance their learning experience. Next slide, please. With personalized learning, I was fortunate enough to have six teachers participate in the Technology Impact Study. As a result of having those devices in those six classrooms, we were able to push out other devices into our other intermediate classrooms. And with that, teachers were able to really utilize Seesaw and Dreambox and Google Classroom and Flipgrid. They were able to utilize that a lot more than before because it was pretty much as though our third, fourth, and fifth were one-to-one. So students were able to take ownership of their learning, they were able to guide their own learning and show their evidence of understanding and learning based on those different platforms, and the teachers could adjust appropriately. We were also able to implement win time, which we learned from Dr. Oliver last school year. So we implemented it in three grade levels this school year. And like Dr. Phillips said before, it's flexible grouping, we're constantly looking at data and figuring out how to meet our students' needs. I attended a workshop in February, or a conference in February, and one of the things, I went to a session, and I absolutely loved, the assistant superintendent was talking about professional learning for staff members. And she was saying typically, school districts, they have the same professional learning for all of the staff members. It doesn't really matter where they are on that continuum, if they're early adopters, if they're proficient users, they're receiving the same professional learning. And she said with her district, a few years ago, they have only personalized learning for all of their professional learning. So if anyone knows me, I don't really wait, I just start implementing things right away. So I sent a survey to each grade level team, and I had them come up with how they wanted to extend their professional learning in a personalized learning way at our next professional learning day. And they were really excited. Like each grade level, they worked together, and they said, this is what we need as a grade level team. This is what we want to explore. This is how we want to further our understanding to support our students. So I had a team, they looked at Sunday strategies, and they wanted to know how to extend those strategies in different areas of literacy. Based on our February District-wide Professional Learning Day, I had two grade levels that really wanted to look at standard-based grading and standard-based assessment. So they were reading polls, they were looking at grading practices, they were collaborating around what standard space should look like and how to implement it effectively. I had a teacher who received a grant for her students to implement a coffee cart for staff members, and this was part of life skills for her kids. She was really excited about that because she felt as though she, that's something she's always wanted to do, but never really had the time to study and figure out how to do it effectively to where her students could gain meaningful experiences from that. I had another team that received a grant for new responsive intervention materials, and they really reviewed that to figure out how it could benefit our school as a whole because, as we all say, these are our students. It's not just their students, but they were looking at how to support our general ed teachers in order to support all of our students. Anyone knows my PE teacher? She's passionate about fitness and nutrition, and she has the fitness part down, but she really wanted to look at how she can implement more learning around student nutrition. So that's what she studied that day. My kindergarten team, they looked at play workshop and how to track data around social emotional learning, looking at every single student and what they were choosing in workshop, what strategies they were using to problem solve, to collaborate, to communicate. And they were using that to communicate with families about where they were at that time of kindergarten. And I also worked closely with the team, our competency-based learning. So we took some standards, we took a couple of standards, and each teacher, they created lessons on how to teach those standards in a different way, whether it was around building, whether it was around technology, and they were going to allow students to have choice in how they wanted to learn those particular standards. So I'm very pleased and impressed and excited and proud of my staff for pivoting. Did I get it in one time, Dr. Lake? I'm pivoting this year. On our strategies, we're really working on implementing future-focused instructional practices to help all of our students. And I think what we implemented this year has definitely helped with our virtual learning experience we are going through right now. So are there any questions?
I have a quick question. It's probably more general, not just specific to Sappington. But on the What I Need time, is that usually geared more toward like your core work, academic work? Or is it also social emotional?
So I think it depends on the comfort level of that particular team. So this school year, because it was our first year of trying it out, we had never really heard about it. They really focused on content area. But I also know some other schools, they look at the social emotional component. So actually, I'm meeting with our building leadership team tomorrow because we will be implementing win time grades one through five next school year. And we're also going to have the Second Step Program, K5. So we're looking at how to integrate our social emotional practices with our win time as well as our class meeting. So we're learning more on how to do it effectively because the win time also is time where our special school district staff can pull their groups, so they also need that social emotional learning component too.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Well, I could talk about Sappington all day, but I won't. So it is my honor to introduce Dr. Tracy Bedmerick, and she will highlight our Gifted Education Program.
Well, hello, everybody, and thank you for being here to hear about our learning programs. I oversee both the LEAP program and the PEGS program, and it is my first year with Lindbergh. So thank you for welcoming me to the Lindbergh community. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So for the Four Cs, creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication, pretty much everything that we do in the Gifted Program is planned around those Four Cs. And this was a curriculum writing year for both of the teams, so they were very intentional about embedding the Four Cs throughout the PEGS and LEAP curriculum. And I'm going to just showcase some different things that each of the programs have done. So in our LEAP program, we have themes in the morning and then kaleidoscope classes in the afternoon. The theme is something that carries throughout the year, and it's centered on a particular topic. So our first and second graders are doing the engineering and design process, and it's really a chance for us to introduce them to gifted learning in general and the concept of failing forward and the design process. Our third graders are looking at living in the present. And so they're looking at the United Nations Sustainable Living Goals, which I'll talk a little bit more about as I go through the presentation, and how they can provide, or how they can use those Sustainable Living Goals to plan for solving problems in both the local community and the global community. Our fourth graders look at living in the past, and they study different time periods of history so that in fifth grade, they can look at living in the future and beyond, and they look at sustainable living in space. Our sixth graders participate in DocU, which is basically a mini medical school. Our seventh graders do time travel. And then our eighth graders, as we launch them into high school, they do a unit basically called What's Your Game Plan? And so they're planning for the future, but they're also going from problem solving to problem design, and they end their year with designing escape rooms for their fellow Lindbergh families to participate in. And so it's just a really great way for them to turn what they've been doing all throughout LEAP of solving problems to create problems for others. And I also wanted to showcase some of the things in the pictures here. So we have our PEG students who go to South Tech, and they get to experience that career learning. So you can see a student there practicing his dentistry skills. Down in the lower corner, that is one of our first and second grade classes, and they were looking at designing dams to divert water flow. And then up in the right corner, that's a third grade class, and they are designing solutions for things like air pollution and and designing buildings that can handle air pollution and prevent air pollution. So some other things too that our fifth graders have done in LEAP is they've used origami to build innovative collapsible structures for landing on Mars. Our first through third graders in PEGS collaborated to design scientific method plans for the district and regional science fairs. And our middle school PEGS program students really worked on communication. They learned how to take different roles in discussions and improve their objective-driven communication, moving the personal side of it and being very focused on the goals of the communication. They've also been working on personal portfolios to communicate their goals and the evidence that they're gathering to support their achievement of their goals. And then in our high school program, a student demonstrated critical thinking by using the GIS mapping programs to come up with a solution to public transportation unreliability in the metro area. And then also, while our students are busy using the Four Cs, our teachers also use the Four Cs. They collaborated immensely, they really worked hard to put together a really strong curriculum for both programs. And then they've also broken down walls to try the team teaching approach. So both in our elementary LEAP program, we have teachers' team teaching, and then in our PEGS program, our elementary teachers are teaching in Teams for Humanity and Teams for STEAM. And then our middle school program, we don't have STEAM at the middle school level. They go out to the challenge classes at the middle school level, but we do have a humanities team for PEGS. So they've really broadened that collaboration as a teacher team as well. Go ahead to the next slide. All right, so for our Lindbergh life and social emotional wellbeing, I did mention that our teachers wrote curriculum this year that embedded the problem-based side of learning, but they also embedded their SEL, their social emotional learning, into the curriculum that they wrote. And one of the big things that really struck me for helping our gifted students was the reflection that they built into every lesson that they do. So prior to when students began an activity, so they learned about the activity that they're going to do, and they're ready to get started, the teachers actually take a step back, and they have the students identify SEL. and they have the students identify SEL skills that they will need for that particular activity. So will they need grit, or will they need teamwork? Will they have to deal with perfectionism and the ability to move on even if they don't have it exactly right? So they kind of talk about how they're going to use those skills prior to beginning the activity. And then every lesson ends with a reflection on how they were able to use those skills to persevere and to grow in their social-emotional skills. One thing also, our third grade being that they focused on the United Nations Sustainable Living Goals, which you can see at the top of this slide, is they designed a field trip of service to give back to the community based on their, based on the sustainable living goals. So they worked with Lifewise STL, and they donated socks and underwear, and then went to Lifewise to package those up for distribution. They also learned about the importance of the census while they were there. They helped with sanitizing daycare toys, and they wrote thank you notes to volunteers. And you can see a picture in the upper left of some of the kids packaging up the socks and underwear there. Additionally, we have worked with the Youth and Need Counselor in our PEGS elementary program and also a little bit in our middle school program. Our middle school portfolio program for PEGS is new this year, and that has just been a great opportunity for students to design the direction that they want to go with their goals and to think through the kind of evidence that they need to have to defend their progress to goal. So it becomes much more student-owned when they are driving that. Additionally, our middle school PEGS program has developed a legacy project where students have identified a problem in the community or in the global community that they want to come up with a solution for, and then they work collaboratively to develop a solution and try to implement it. It's a little bit different now with virtual learning, but they're still trying to persevere through that project. Our experience with South Tech has provided that career exploration and real-world experiences. And then also, this is the first year that we've had all of our PEG students attending LEAP for all grade levels. And so that's provided more of that opportunity for the students to collaborate, work with like-minded peers, and then also explore that problem solving. Some other, and one other thing that I think is really great that we've provided for our parents and their social-emotional wellbeing is the speaker series. So this year, I spoke for one of the speakers' evenings on high achieving and gifted students and how you can meet the needs at home of those students. And then Christine Nobby, who is the Director of Gifted Education for DCE, came and spoke about advocating for our gifted learners. We had more speakers planned, but unfortunately, due to weather and then now our shift to virtual learning, we weren't able to host as many as we would have liked. But we're going to continue that next year, and we're hoping to start with our first speaker speaking on executive functioning skills and how you can support your children with getting started off to the right, on the right foot at the beginning of the year with executive functioning and organization. And lastly, I do want to speak in regards to SEL wellbeing is our universal screening that we put in place. So this is not necessarily directed towards social-emotional learning, but it does take into account the equity piece that we are really trying to make sure that all students that should be in gifted programming are identified and included in gifted programming. So we now universally screen our first, second, and third graders, and then still also allow for referrals for kindergarten and fourth grade on up. So I think that's really important, that we're making that effort to make sure we catch every kid. Next slide, please. And so then lastly, for personalized learning, I just broke that up by the different programs. So in elementary PEGS, we have begun using the program called Altitude Learning. And this is a program that allows each teacher to differentiate their lessons and their instruction based on student needs. What it does is it gives the teachers an opportunity to create cards that the students can then log on to. They have their cards of activities that they need to do. Teachers and students can communicate back and forth, and everything can really be tailored to the students' needs, and they each have their own individual menus. Additionally, our elementary PEGS program has had the students exploring their own problem-based learning projects. So sort of like a passion program, a passion project where they get to create their own learning project. And they have been creating different ideas for how to solve issues for families who want to foster a pet, and how do you go about doing that, and other projects that, as well. In our elementary LEAP program, everything that they do is problem- and project-based, and they also have a lot of student voice and choice. So I mentioned that the theme class is a class that goes throughout the year, and it is pretty standard. But in the afternoon, they have their kaleidoscope classes, which is a class that they get to choose based on their interest. They take two per semester. And a couple examples are Italian artists designing based on nature, where they look at like how a turtle has its own shelter with it, and then they design shelter based on like a turtle shell, or they look at how animals can run at different speeds, and how can we design structures to go more quickly. Also, classes like game design and coding. And so that's something that gives them really a chance to explore in depth for a longer period of time, something that's of high interest to them. For our middle school PEGS, like I mentioned, they have the individual student goal setting and evidence gathering, and that also involves a conferencing piece where they get to work with a teacher one-on-one to really develop a strong plan for how they're going to achieve their goals, whether it's in school or outside in the community. Our middle school LEAP program is also project-based learning, and each unit has elements of student voice and choice, particularly in the area of research and creating their solutions to problems. And then lastly, our high school LEAP program is a student design-driven design project that goes for the entire semester. I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions? All right. If there are no questions, we are going to move on to the middle school program, and it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lauren Boger.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bagneric. We love having our leapers in the building with us and our PEG students at Sparing, so thank you. First, I just wanted to start off and say thank you to everyone, especially during this time. This picture here, we have over a thousand wonderful people in the wings here of this image. And, you know, just putting this learning report together and listening to all of you and reflecting, you know, as Dr. Lake said as well, it is emotional to be going through these times. And I can't wait till next year's picture, hopefully, when we can get our entire school community back together once again to see our awesome students and staff in person. So thank you. As you look to the next slide, you will see our compass goals for Sparing, which align to what we're talking about from each building, but just wanted to reiterate what they were this year. These really guided us in our sense of purpose as I went into year two as building principal. So our BLT got together in May, and we really worked hard on setting these goals for the building. So we had sparing life, instructional innovation in design, best grading practices, and personalized assessment, as well as ongoing communication. So you'll see how these align with our work, and we use these sort of as touchstones in our meetings and our faculty meetings. We're still using them even now through virtual learning and what they mean and how we need to shift or pivot even with our experience right now. So on the next slide, as we go along, we're going to start off with Lindbergh life or sparing life as it aligns with SEL and our wellbeing. And I'm going to highlight how our students have been curious, creative, found a sense of identity and agency, integrity, and inclusiveness here on our slides. So at the center of our work, our students last year came up with this mindset, the take-flight mindset. And previously, or historically at Sparing, there has been a saying that has been said on the announcements each day. So we tried to come up with something with the students that framed their character education that they've had during their time in Lindbergh, but also meant something to them. So they had voice and ownership in that, and you'll hear us say that on the announcements each day. And then through flyer time classes, they unpack those character words. And as you can see in the middle, we have student leadership happening in flyer time. Students are still leading discussions around these character words. At the top left, we have that identity component that aligns closely with our work and equity. That was led by Melissa Nussbaum up there, our instructional design coach. That particular bulletin board highlights how that lesson was conducted within our flyer time classes. And this particular teacher also wanted to display that network. In the bottom left, we started our year with quite a bit of team building. We wanted to continue that. We hosted a back-to-school event, a back-to-school barbecue. And we have, you know, interestingly enough, we had 10 new staff members at Sparing. So it was really important to us that we had the year start off right. We had a wonderful and creative video set to the new Top Gun movie Maverick. Had some fun with that. We also hosted a parent academy and our back-to-school sessions, and the families enjoyed starting the year off and taking flight in that way. We continue with that creative piece through Unity Day. Students at the middle school level really, they really understand what it means to show some spirit and dress up. You'll see in the top right corner, we took that take-flight mindset to a whole new level, and I even got Dr. Clint Walker to dress up. So it was a good time there, and students really enjoy that, that sense of community within the building. And we know that they're missing each other now. But as you look in the bottom right as well, that sense of agency and owning the learning experience. These are students who are hosting a student forum for the entire St. Louis region. So we had principals from around the area come, listen to what Sparing is all about, and kind of hear our story. I also have an image there of a ticket that we gave for another student forum that we did with students just for that ongoing conversation, giving middle school students a voice in what we're doing on a consistent basis. So that's Lindbergh life is what it looks like at Sparing. On our next slide, as we go to the four Cs, there's definitely overlap. I just wanted to say that. I mean, some of these topics, there's overlap in between a lot of the things that we're highlighting. So in the center of our work there is the innovation and design cycle that we are really emphasizing at Sparing. You'll see that. You may have heard about the design time experience that we have offered our students this year. Design time is a class that has been in the morning three days a week. We asked staff members to propose a design time course experience. Our building leadership team then vetted that against what we had gone through as a staff last year to understand what the design thinking and innovation design model is. And they've got the stamp of approval from the building leadership team. And then students came in in August, and they were able to, during a course of a launch day, understand what design time was going to mean. And then they have, they've got to experience three rotations so far this year and sign up at the Google site that highlights each of the different design times. So some of the things that you will see in terms of that creativity are happening, communication in the hallways, they're critically thinking. We even have, we have a design time that is also the GIS mapping system. We have another where we have students who have, they will find out soon, but Mr. Murphy tells me that with the CubeStat rockets, if it's still a go, they will get to launch their CubeStat rocket into outer space. And this could not have been possible without setting the tone for a lot of this work, too, collaboratively through our Design Jam Day with Truman. This was one of my favorite days of the year, and just the energy in the cafeteria. We had Dr. Caleb Rashad and Dr. Eric Shigala from the San Diego area come in and lead both staff through a design jam process. And they're really focused on empathy, as well as staff just, you know, continuing to learn from each other and go through that process together. So it's set the tone well. We still hear from Eric and Caleb regularly to see how things are going within our process. And with that, I mean, as you look at the bottom-left corner, you'll see a collaborative group from Truman and Sparing. When we went out ourselves to collaborate, and here is a picture of us in Atlanta, Georgia, at Mount Vernon Institute for Innovation, where we are consistently finding new ways and new ideas to bring back to our middle school redesign process and what can we bring back to our building leadership teams to continue to implement the four Cs. And then that ongoing, you know, that celebration piece in the bottom right-hand corner, these guys in Mr. Taylor's class know that I love the Cardinals, and they also know how to continue to collaborate and think together. The top picture, too, just in terms of learning spaces, you'll see that often at Sparing is kids overflowing into the hallways to think together, to collaborate together with each other. They love that face-to-face interaction at the middle school level. Going to our next slide. Personalized learning. I highlighted the top image here. We can probably go on and on with personalized learning, especially as it relates to things that are happening on Canvas. But with the top image, this is something that we are seeing a shift at the middle level. This is a sixth-grade example from a science class where we have a teacher who is really trying to use standard-based learning with her students. I appreciate this because it's definitely taking a risk for a teacher who is relatively new to education and also, you know, kind of pushing the boundary there within her own PLC to try something. So I wanted to highlight that especially because I think it gives an amazing example of what feedback looks like as it relates to each individual student. It has student language in there, and it has an amazing component of reflection for our students. So even as we talk about the virtual learning going on right now, been highlighting things like this so that teachers can continue to give feedback on student growth. Speaking of Canvas, that bottom-right picture, oh, hi, I miss middle school lunch during this time in a cafeteria filled with 330 kids. We do miss that energy, and in this picture, I was blown away with just the students so quickly understanding what it meant to use Canvas to personalize their learning experiences. You know, they quickly downloaded apps, they were checking grades and doing assignments, not only from the devices within the building and devices within the technology impact study, but their own personal devices even at lunchtime. So they are hungry for that personalization, they're hungry for feedback, and Canvas is doing a great job of a learning management system to allow us to do so. And just one kind of statistic, our entire sixth-grade classes, they implemented Canvas, which has been excellent to see at the sixth-grade level so that while our students matriculate, they will have that experience, they will have that confidence on how to utilize and access Canvas as a student and their experience. And so we also, like many other schools, wanted to personalize experiences, and we continue through the classroom design and furniture. And so that's just a highlight of a book cafe that one of our teachers in sixth grade also designed. So just from that personalization piece, too, and like I said, I think it overlaps with several of our goal, our compass goals. We administered a youth truth survey this year. You may have heard of that. Our top, our highest rating, our highest score, if you will, was belonging and connectedness through peer collaboration. And that could not be more true when we are doing things right now, even what we're seeing on Zoom. The feedback that we are getting from students is part of their favorite part of the virtual experience is just seeing their friends' faces, hearing their voices, hearing their teachers' voices, and that connection, that personal connection. Additionally, a top, you know, kind of score on the youth truth was that teachers understand my life outside of school. So I couldn't be happier to hear that, especially at a time like right now, so that we can personalize experiences for each student and their unique needs and their families. As far as design time and the personalization and that experience together, that survey, we gave that out this year, about mid-year. And we asked them to kind of, you know, check off which of the following categories do they feel like really they were able to demonstrate growth in. And amazingly, I really was kind of shocked by the communication feature. I really was impressed to see that students' number-one self-assessment was in their communication skills. I think often, especially, you know, at the middle level, when students have phones or social networking, We think often, especially, you know, at the middle level, when students have phones or social networking, we were pleased to see that the communication component, students felt that they had demonstrated growth in that area. So we can, you know, personalize for, for each kid. I could probably go on and on about every student in that wing at the beginning in that image. But we wanted to highlight some of the things that we have implemented. And also look forward to sharing with you our continued progress as we continue to go through the process of a middle school redesign. And where we are with the research and investigation there in the coming months and the coming year as well. So thanks for listening to what excellence in learning and designing the future looks like at sparing. Do you have any questions?
Lauren, I, I have one question. I, I think what I heard you say on the tracking my progress. That was one teacher who's new to Limburg, but also to teaching that's implementing that. Is it in, is it in other classrooms or with other teachers are using that as well?
Not exactly in this way, and that's why I wanted to highlight it because I, that needs to become part of where we continue to grow. And what we would like to see transferred, especially after listening to Rick formally. We're trying to highlight contextual examples of what Rick's message looks like in the classroom.
Yeah, that's really cool. So I'll look forward to hearing that.
Yeah, I think, you know, when you see it like that and you can, you, you can process and you can understand, I really feel like that gives teachers a higher level of confidence and examples to take back to their own classrooms. But yeah, definitely would like to see this continue within the PLC and, and other PLCs as well.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Without further ado, I would like to introduce the principal at Truman Middle School and the Missouri Middle School Principal of the Year, Dr. Mike Stratman.
Thanks, Lauren. And also hello to everyone. Thanks for allowing us to share about our schools today. It's great to see all of you as well. I'm honored to speak on Truman Middle School. It's certainly been an amazing year for change. Change before probably the biggest shift any of us have ever made, but a lot of change. And, you know, I'm proud to say that our staff are, are moving along that trend line very well and adapting to meeting the needs of students continually changing as well. So a lot of what you'll hear me talk about in this first slide really is putting people first and finding a way to create some shifts within our, you know, organization to, to help kids. Since August, we've really focused on building a strong foundation of intentional relationship building. I think in the top left-hand corner, this was kind of the theme for the year was all in for all kids. And we expected that to be all the time, you know, and it's, you can't take days off, you can't take class periods off. And it's a lot of work and I think our buy-in was great with that this year. We also committed to not just talking about that in August and then letting it go away. One example of that, after the first quarter of the year, we had a staff professional learning opportunity where we took the opportunity to post a picture of every kid in a school on the wall in the cafeteria. And we did a dot activity, pretty simple activity, but every teacher was given a handful of dots. And they were to go around and, and put a sticker next to any kid that they've developed a relationship with. It gave us a real quick snapshot, snapshot of those kids that maybe had fallen through the cracks and we've missed. But certainly focused on our commitment to all the kids throughout the entire year. So that, that was a really fun activity and we tried to visit that as often as possible. From that, the teams kind of took and made action plans for how they were going to address those things. Within their locus of control on their team. So that was really a fun opportunity. Much of our work has been just centered around, you know, when you talk about relationships, you have to talk about empathy and understanding others around you, and that's adult to adult, kid to kid and adult to student. So that, that's really an important piece for us that we're really proud of. Additionally, a piece we've been really proud of on the left side there, you'll see restorative practices. We've tried to really meet this expectation for our staff in, in two ways. One is having teachers create classroom circles where they're constantly listening to students, you know, their student voice is important. And I think we continually need to find creative ways to hear their voice and get their input. And students typically aren't too shy about providing their input at the middle school level anyway. It's, and it's usually something we embrace. Secondly, with that, Dr. Wright and I have really focused the last two years on building strong relationships with kids, focusing on a connection before correction. You know, as a, as an administrator, dealing with some discipline issues throughout the week, you can really, you can really make those fit in, in various ways. We decided to try to really focus on the relationship first with those. I believe that's a large contributor to our 28% reduction in discipline over the last two years. Very proud to talk about that because that means more students in the classrooms and more students learning. We've also been given an opportunity to kind of prioritize our facility use. So I want to certainly thank everyone involved in that. It's been looking at things as Dr. Lake says frequently from a different lens. We were able to prioritize the creation of a design lab space, which we call the launch pad, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. But all of it comes back to meeting the social emotional needs of students. We found that we can build connections through engaging opportunities. So we're also really super thrilled with our impact we've had on some very specific students that have really had successful years and that those are the hard parts. I know we, I meet with my counselors weekly and not having the ability to follow up with kids in our setting has been a challenge for the counselors and I know administrators as well. So virtual, virtual meeting of students is not nearly as rewarding as seeing them in person. So. Also just some of our youth truth survey, we've been blessed to be able to give this as an opportunity to gain feedback from, from students. Some of our specific strengths that have come out of that, which is great to hear, belonging and peer collaboration and relationships. So clearly the work we've been doing is being rewarded and, you know, and, and in turn helping, helping students be successful. Next slide, please. So along with the theme here, our four Cs work really has been transformational for us. You'll see in the top left-hand corner. That's our design space, our launch pad, which has been really awesome opportunities for staff and students to be able to get together. You'll see in that room that there's a lot of people. We have upward, we have two, we can fit two classes in there at a time. So upwards of 50 to 60 students in there that we will have, and many times there's multiple adults. Obviously you see the two teachers in science there working. That's the direct correlation. That picture goes with our top right-hand corner. Trying to find a way to put a different lens on what we've been teaching in previous years. Our zoo field trip this year really gave an opportunity for students to fully engage in a, in a process more than just learning about something that they researched. So they were able to, they were assigned an animal. They were able to choose which animal they wanted to research at the zoo and observe. So they did some research beforehand, observed at the zoo. They were really looking at with this project, what does their biome look like, their living quarters, their space? And how does that meet that specific animal's needs? And what are some recommendations I can make for improvement? So basically from this point, you can see in the top left-hand corner, that zoo field trip picture, they're creating a new biome for that specific animal. And they were working with a partner in this situation. But just a great opportunity to really reinforce the four Cs and get them engaged in communication with others and collaboration with peers. And really be able to critically think on, on what those animals need. A way we've kind of embraced some student ownership at the bottom right-hand corner. That logo that's outside of our library and launch pad right now was designed through art class by one of our seventh grade students. So that, that's been a really cool piece addition. So we printed that through our cricket on vinyl. And we're able to put that directly on the floor and wax over top of it. So really cool, kind of added student ownership piece. So not only have we really focused on those four Cs, I know Ms. Valis has been an integral part of, of this. She does amazing work in that, in that library where she's really been an additional coach for teachers to be able to provide to her and, and to the lab and how we can continuously improve what we're doing there. The bottom left-hand corner was a really cool project as well in math class, sixth grade. They were studying the strength of specific bridges. And so they took this, a math and science approach to building a bridge that would support an amount of weight. And so this was the winning stack of books. I believe there ended up being 50 books on here. And to the point where it got so high, I think I had to catch it from, from falling at one point. But it was a fun activity and other way for kids to kind of engage in, in a fun, engaging activity where they could find some purpose. Next slide, please. Our focus with personalized learning really was kicked off as well. Lauren kind of touched base on it, so I won't get too far into it. But I think really offered staff an opportunity to engage in some, a learning opportunity was out of the norm for them. And, and really, I think helps support us being able to develop different offerings for our teachers as well and their learning. So some specific things that we have looked at this year, planning for flexible seating. I know flexible seating is a, certainly a topic of conversation. One thing we wanted to make sure we were doing with it is not just throwing some different types of furniture in a classroom, but how are we going to use this that's going to maximize opportunities for students to learn? So this is an example in Ms. Deary's math classroom in sixth grade. This was actually a Limburg grant as well, that was a teacher grant that was able to support some of this. So that was, that was a really neat thing. Incorporating self-reflection and goal setting, we've tried to constantly, I know this is a, an example of the launch pad feedback we get from students as well. Staff and students both are providing us input on the use of that space and, and how we can maximize, maximize that. Flexible and intentional master scheduling, this is part of our middle school redesign. Been given a great opportunity this year to spend some time working with Ronnie and Lauren and a group of invested other staff and community members. This is a picture of the number of ideas that we had moving forward with something. So clearly we had to filter these things down to something. And so we were consolidating them. I know we spent a, a lot of time doing that. And I know Ronnie specifically, she deserves a lot of credit for the work she's done with guiding this group as well. So let's see, the bottom right-hand corner is just one other thing I wanted to talk about. We have continually tried to meet the needs of all learners. We have some kids that do very well with traditional school and become boarding classrooms at times. So we, we are trying to enrich kids as well. This just gives you one example. We have created a opportunity for one student to help us create, and this is Ms. Valis working with her and, and myself in a minimal way. But creating a school store where this student's specifically doing a lot of the creating for it. Creating specific sticker type logo stuff, some logo wear type things. So just trying to get them engaged as much as we can possibly engage them. This is also something I know she's actively working on from home. So another kind of cool piece to that. So. That's about all I need to share. I could talk forever, just like everyone else. I know we're all very proud of our schools. Any specific questions? Perfect. All right. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the Limburg High School Principal, Dr. Eric Cochran.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. So at LHS this year, like every year, we're really proud of the strides we've made. And especially now as we're continuing to reimagine the high school that we know this is a reimagining that will not be complete until the doors to the new campus are open in about three years. But we're, we're really excited about where we're going. So every year for the last five years, we've really been focusing on social emotional learning at the high school. Like a lot of high schools around, we're all trying to make sure we're supporting our students in that way. And I would say that this year is the year that we implemented what I would consider the most significant social and emotional change that we've, we've ever had, and that's our new schedule. And more specifically, that would be Power Lunch. Power Lunch has been a game changer for the high school. When we started our process for making the schedule, we had two goals that were our, our top two. Number one was reducing student stress and number two was reducing teacher stress. And the statistics that are on here, the top statistics are from surveys that we did with students and, and staff. And then that second set of statistics on the slide are from our youth truth survey data that all deal with school culture. And both of them show on the school culture side for youth truth, we show, we see upward trends there. And then we see great numbers and results from our students and from our teachers that show that they did indeed see, see stress levels go down considerably for, for both of those groups. So when you walk through our building, you can see students hanging out with their friends, meeting with their teachers during that time, reading quietly. Sometimes taking a nap, which never bothers me if that's what that student needs at that time. We see them playing frisbee outside. So in other words, we see our students decompressing. And that has, I think, greatly improved not only how they're handling things with their social and emotional stress, but also academics. We know we have challenges still because we're a high school with 2,000 students in it. But most of our students largely, or most of our teachers, excuse me, report that they're seeing a much greater level of engagement among their students in their classrooms after lunch in the afternoon. So we're really excited about how well this has gone this year. If you go to the next slide real quick, I've got one slide on here that shows just a quote and I won't read it to you, but this quote I think highlights one of the other great benefits of Power Lunch, and that is a sense of belonging that exists at our school like never before. We've had clubs that once had 10 students attending, now have 60 students attending. And we have a large number of students in our school who could never participate in any kind of school organization or activity who are now participating in multiple activities. And so we're really proud of that sense of belonging and how much it's grown at the high school this year. And I fully believe that, that our students would, would be, would be really upset with the high school principal if they, if they, if, if he ever took Power Lunch away. All right.
Eric, I can.
I just realized my video is off.
Hey, Eric.
Yeah.
We probably have to come looking for you. You might disappear.
Here I am.
Yeah, there you go. No, if you took away your Power Lunch from your kids, we might have to come look for you because you might disappear.
Yes, yes. But here, this is proof that I still am alive with my face. So sorry about that. Okay. So on the next slide. So with four Cs, from a curriculum standpoint, we're, we're continuing to evolve as well and incorporate more of the four Cs into our lessons across every curricular area. Our admin team tries to highlight the four Cs in all of our observations. And we try to let our teachers know where we are seeing it so that they know what that looks like in their classroom and, and trying to find ways to grow that in, in further lessons. So in these slides, you see an example of each. You see creativity in the top left with, you know, whether it's a students who are demonstrating the themes of the French Revolution by creating a, an elaborate cake. Or whether on the, on the top right next to it, you see students collaborating in a foods class to make tasty treats. Below that, on the bottom right, students using critical thinking to help determine how to make robots perform specific tasks. Or on the bottom left, these are students who are part of our equity group, who I know went around to many of our elementary schools and other schools throughout the district. Doing trainings on how to promote equity within their building. And so I think more and more you will continue to see. And so I think more and more uh you will continue to see uh the implementi- implementation of the four Cs in our building. That is especially true as we, we start seeing more project-based approaches uh in our building. We had a thirty stu- uh teachers who were trained in PBL uh over the summer prior to this year. And we're expecting another thirty or so teachers to be trained this summer as we'll continue to uh, uh, train our staff. To provide authentic experiences for us. On the next slide, again, uh, a point of tremendous pride for us as a, as a school. Uh, are the uh, the new pathways that we're providing as we try to personalize the learning experience for every single student. This has been done uh in coordination, again, with the, the Teaching and Learning Department. Dr. Sparks has been a, a big supporter of this. Again, Ronnie Segura has been instrumental in helping us to define what these pathways are. Uh, and to uh, to increase the options available. We, we, we started having conversations a couple of years ago that we needed to recognize that not all of our high school students. Necessarily need to go immediately to a two or a four-year uh college. That while we will continue to prepare every single student so they can have that option. We need to make sure that we're doing a better job of personalizing what uh things may look like for them after they leave us. And so we have, we, we've really worked hard to come up with options uh for everyone. And, and I know we haven't probably quite gotten there yet, but we're, we're moving in that direction. And so uh, many of these, uh, you know, what, what, whether it be our biomedical program, which you see in the top middle. Or uh, our, our technology strand over in the top right, we're with our Digi Girls event, uh trying to get. Young ladies into computer programming, uh, our engineering uh down in the bottom left. Uh, you have uh the leadership strand, which is done in our business department, evident in our uh FBLA classes. Which if you look really, really closely at that picture, you see some outstanding leaders there modeling great leadership uh for our students. And then even some, some other uh strands that we haven't quite introduced yet. That we're talking about like an aviation or an unmanned drone strand for students. Because we know that that is a hot market and that's a picture of Ronnie uh trying on some virtual learning glasses. So that she can uh fly a drone. And we're hoping that we can bring those types of things to our students in the future as well. And, and then another big part of personalized learning, which we've achieved this year, which I know will be fully implemented next year. Was our impact study with technology and uh moving towards a one-to-one experience at the high school next year. So that is another example of personalization that we know will, will benefit our, all of our kids. And if you go to the next slide, uh, the final slide, that we're really excited about. Uh, all the new programs that we have started offering this year. Uh, again, showing our desire to give students different pathways and different opportunities. And uh, some that are coming next year, whether it be early college, which was a great success this year. The growth of dual credit, uh caps, which we already know we've got uh right now eleven candidates for caps. Next year for that program, uh Cadet Teaching was a new program for us for prospective teachers. And then the growth of our Project Lead the Way biomedical program. Um, and then this, this next year, we're going to be expanding our internships for kids. Uh, we're going to have a, a, since we're going one-to-one, we're going to have a tech help desk. That's going to be manned by students who are going to be helping to uh problem solve. Mechanical issues and software issues with our devices. And then we're going to have a new sports broadcast marketing class that will hopefully have a lot of great ti- content available. For our new scoreboard, which is down on the new uh stadium field. So we're really excited about these opportunities. We're going to continue to explore more. And, and hopefully we're hitting every student with something that excites them uh and gets them um in a, in a direction. Beyond just um a high school diploma, but something that, that uh, that really points them towards a prospective career. And with that, um, do you have any questions? Should I reintroduce Charlene and we can go around one more time?
You know, I, Eric, you know, my ADD is already kicked in. There's no way I could sit much longer.
All right.
I just want to thank all of the principals. Um, we, we practiced this, uh, was it last week? Yes, last week. All the weeks are starting to, you know, we had practiced this last week and had a lot of technology glitches. So I know there were a lot of nerves coming into this about how well technology would work, whether or not some of the audio.
Tara, we've already had this conversation once today.
Talking about technology problems, you were broken up that whole time. I have no idea. But that was great. I appreciate everybody uh being so flexible and making that work. That was a really great presentation. So thank you.
I would, I would echo that. You guys did lots of good work.
All right, any, any general questions about any of the, the reports from our buildings? We have our achievement reports still to go through and that's you, Tara, right?
So we've actually shared that with you via the Friday packet. So we, we were really worried about time tonight, so we didn't plan to go through that as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, and fortunately, we did well on time and even get a little break before executive session.
I know, I know. Well, do I dare say, are there any questions about the achievement report that were, that was shared in our Friday packet? That anyone wants to throw out there?
I just have a comment about, um, as I was listening, this is such a different conversation than two or three years ago. Um, when I first came on the board, it was very data-driven, very numbers-driven. And um, I got emotional because this is so cool. Because it's, it's more student-driven. It's more um about the students and their overall experience. I don't know why I'm getting, continuing to be emotional, but just thank you for your leadership. And um, the transition seemed to be from, from my seat and observer. Um, very seamless from all the data into more student-driven. So um, I just want to let you know, I appreciate that. So thank you.
Well, and I think I would add to that, Christie, um, along with uh the student-driven. I think we saw some of the, the data coming with that this year as well. So um, I, I appreciated that as well, like what happens when the students have this choice and, and all of these um creative opportunities to learn. So, good stuff.
And that's, and you'll start seeing more of that come together, the, the data. And you know, are we being successful for personalized learning or social emotional, all of that? But you guys go back to our conversation, we had a, a big unwind of data, 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 and that's all we talked about. So um, this year I felt like you guys did a really good job building principles of kind of starting to mesh that together. And so I would echo Karen's point there. So, um, because you got to have the data, we got to know that what we're doing is, is successful. But um, you know, sometimes you gotta, when you're going to unwind culture, you gotta um kick it to the curb. So.
I would just add to that, um, Jill does a really nice job of, of compiling data and doing um quarterly meetings with our principals. Because the data is part of it. I mean, when we're looking at student growth, you can't ignore, you know, what the data says. But what we're doing a better job of is drilling that down. As Angie talked about EduClima and how Concord's been an early adopter of using EduClima. EduClima is a huge tool. We talk about how do we get kids growing um at the rate that's appropriate for them? And that is specifically targeted towards them. And that will continue to evolve as we go through our, our processes and the work that we do through a compass plan.
Yeah, the data is like Tiff said, is very, very important. But publicly, you know, we need to really be talking about our kids. We don't want our kids to divi- defined by a number or a test score. We want it to be about them as a person and the whole, whole experience. And that's just one little piece to their um educational experiences, all of that data. So um, you guys did a really nice job of telling your story um from a student perspective. So, good job.
Agreed. All right. If we don't have anything else, and we do need to adjourn this workshop before we go to our executive session. So I may have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
All right, thank you. And again, by rule of call, Karen Schuster, yes. Mike Chamia.
Yes.
Jennifer Miller.
Yes.
Christie Watts.
Yes.
Matt Alonso.
Yes.
And Kathy Lorenz.
Yes.
And Mike Tischlis.
I think he gave you a head nod.
He did.
I think so.
Okay. All right, well, then I'll assume uh Mike was a yes, and that means a motion carries seven zero and we are adjourned.